Director Grover. I think we have, I believe we have a quorum. Is that right? Looks like Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner Bell, Commissioner McCormick, Commissioner Wickern. Myself, so. We have counsel now too. Good. I think you're muted, Director.
Can you hear me now?
That's better, yeah.
Chad Call is a new commissioner. Sure, you see on there?
Don't see that name.
He might, I went through and did training with him and he might be propping on. But he's replacing Bruce Nelson.
Okay.
So he may prop. He comes from the Utah area.
I can't hear.
Sorry, Director. Yeah, we can't, we can't hear your, your comments, your audios.
Okay, let me get a little closer to my.
There we go.
Is that better?
Yes, much better.
I'll hug the mic. So Chad Call is a new planning commission member and he comes from Big D Construction. And he has a lot of development history and he's just gonna be a great fit to the planning commission, it seems like. I visited with him this week. Some training. So he may be popping on.
Alright, then, and his name was, what was it again? Chad Call, okay, thank you. Alright, well, it looks like. I'm thinking, I don't see Commissioner Andreaotti yet. Unless I miss, oh, there he is, he just popped on. So it looks like we have everyone except for possibly Commissioner Call at this time. Am I seeing that right?
Yes.
Okay, so there's our roll call. We'll go with that for now and hopefully he'll be able to join us. So first item on our agenda for tonight is the minutes from May 11th, May 19th, July 13th, and August 10th. Commissioners, my review was satisfactory. Does anyone have any comments on the, on the minutes from those meetings?
Chair, I reviewed them as well and didn't see any good correction.
Thank you.
So I did find a few things, just minor. On the May 11th note. It says that there are six members present, but on the first motion, it says the motion carries five to nothing. There needs to be a note there, maybe that I was not present for that vote, that's why it's five nothing, five zero.
And you joined that, you joined that meeting later on, correct, Commissioner?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, cuz I thought that I did see a note along those lines. Are you talking? So I'm seeing. Okay. So at the top of what would be page three of the minutes, is that where you're talking about?
I'm actually talking page one of the minutes at the very bottom.
Okay.
It's DR number 2021-04. Down at the bottom of the motion, it says the motion carries five zero.
Right.
There's just needs to be a note there that I was absent for that one, just like it was on the other. There's another one. A little later where there was.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's where the note is, is on the top of page three, right?
Yeah, all I'm saying is that no problem needs to be there for the other votes that were there.
Okay.
And then on. Let's see, item number eight. Down at the motion for to open to a public hearing. It says Commissioner Bell moves to open the public hearing, Commissioner Edwards seconds, motion carries. And there is no public hearing, and then it says Commissioner Edwards moves to open the public hearing, and that should say closed public hearing.
Okay.
So just a couple little minor things. Everything else on the other note for, we're just fine.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Anyone else? Well, and it looks like Commissioner Call has joined us. Welcome, Commissioner Call. We're glad to have you with our group.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You, you may not later on.
That might be the case.
Okay, we're just talking about the minutes from our previous meetings, if, if you missed that part. Any other Commissioner comments on the, on the minutes from those meetings? Not hearing any, I will call for a motion.
Chair, I move to approve minutes from May 11th, 2021, May 19th, 2021, July 13th, 2021, and August 10th, 2021, with those minor corrections stated by Commissioner Bell.
Thank you, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. Unanimously, for the record. Okay, that gets us on to our, our next item, our only item, it looks like, for tonight. Administrative item SPE 0830, 2021. Discussion and action on a conceptual sketch plan endorsement request for Alley Farms Cluster Subdivision. A proposal consisting of 31 lots and open space parcels totaling 11 acres. Staff, Tammy, I think.
Yes, Commissioner, thank you. I am wondering if the host can allow me to share my screen.
Yes, of course.
Thanks, June. While we're waiting for that, this is located around 4,700 West and 900 South. The proposal is a 30 acre subdivision located on about 25 acres or so. The applicant is dedicating about 50% open space area. We've got a little bit of the A2 zone that straddles that western area over the open space. The rest is located in the A1 zone. Let me see if I can pull this up for you, Commissioners. Here we go. Okay, can everyone see that? Okay? Okay.
Yes.
Alright, so this is where we're located. Let me show you the, oop, wrong one. Let me show you the sketch plan here. Hold on just a moment. We do have, we do have an individual or two on the phone that can answer any questions that you may have. This is the proposed layout. As you can see, they've got a road stub to the west here. And they're connecting out off of 4,700 West, and we've got them stubbed to the north and south. Again, this is just a sketch plan endorsement, so this is a bit conceptual. There may be a little bit of change, but generally speaking, I think the amount of open space, which is a little over 11 acres, and the number of lots, which this is showing 31, but there will actually be 30 lots. So, kinda went over the net open space and how the calculations worked, and so the developer understands there's 30 lots involved in this. So this would be the general layout. Do you have any questions for me?
Tammy, I do. I, I believe we saw this before, and if that's correct, what has changed when you get that far?
That's a good question. If it came, if it's come in before, it hasn't come in under this name. I don't know if Chris Cave is on the call.
I, I think I may have seen this in a different meeting. I'm sorry. Yeah. This probably came in on the waterboard.
That, yeah, that likely was it. I know that they are, they have kind of already started looking at the subdivision process, and I know that they've been in touch with Taylor West Weaver's. That may be where you've seen it before.
Yeah, my apologies.
No, you're all good. Any other questions, Commissioners?
I got one question. Tammy, just curious. I know it's a little early in the game, but just with the other subdivisions, we run into secondary water issues in this area. Do you know who they're gonna have provide that?
They've indicated West Warren, Warren. I don't know if that's correct. Chris, have you got different information than that?
Trek is on the line. He's with the development team. If he can unmute himself, he can answer that question.
Yeah, so we have a couple of options that we're sifting through. We have been working with Upper Irrigation and West Weaver Basin. We aren't 100% with what we're, what direction we're gonna move in yet. We know that the subdivision to the east of us, what they're doing for secondary water, and we're possibly, we're looking into different avenues with a viable way to have secondary water.
Okay, thanks. I just know that this kinda gets, the secondary water gets to be an issue over here, so appreciate that.
Yeah.
And Commissioner, I appreciate you bringing that up. That is something that will be addressed. For subdivision, we'll be looking at least for some sort of feasibility letter for that preliminary approval. And then, of course, they'll be a little bit further, hopefully, into that water process before we come back for a final approval.
For sure.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff or the applicant?
This is Commissioner Bell. Do we have any plans for the open space?
The intent for the open space is to, to have it leased out or owned for agricultural purposes.
So does that mean you're leaving water with that too? You're looking at secondary water with that as well?
I'm gonna defer to Trek.
Right now, we wanna leave the, the open space as is, and so we're not planning to do any secondary water with that.
What do you mean as is? Is there currently not farm or land on that property?
No, not from my understanding. So we're just, we're gonna kinda just leave it as open space. We're gonna own and retain the property, but not for the time being, we're not gonna do anything with it. We're gonna leave it exactly how we found it.
Mr. Bell, if I can add to that a little bit, that kinda concerns me as well. Currently, they are farming that property. They're growing props on it. They're, somehow they're getting irrigation to it. So it might not be pressurized irrigation, but it has flood irrigation. I, I don't wanna, I mean, personally don't wanna see a field of weeds just come over it.
Right, I don't understand the point of preserving open space if we're just gonna let it grow into weeds, not do anything with the land. What's the point of holding on to it and preserving it so that you can do some legislative action later and develop it?
No, I don't, we just don't know exactly the direction that we wanna move in yet with the open space. So that's why we're gonna leave it as is. We ideally would like to give it to a farmer, but we're not fully aware of what we should do with it and how we should go about that. So we're gonna defer that till preliminary meetings and further down the road.
Well, if I could make a suggestion, I would hope that you would come back in your, in your next opportunity with us and, and give us some ideas of what you are going to do with that, because, yeah, open space is, is not, it's not gonna be acceptable to have open space that's, that's just left as is, especially in this circumstance where that's currently being irrigated. If that's left as is, there'll be weeds as high as the houses back there.
Yeah, and we definitely don't want that. We wanna make sure that there is some control on the property. And so, as the owners of the property, we wanna make sure that like what you guys are saying, there is no excess of weeds and it's not growing rampant. We wanna keep it in control. We're still trying to figure out how we wanna do that.
Commissioners, can I interject and just kind of let you know that for preliminary, in order to get a cluster subdivision application submitted, they do have to provide a detailed open space plan. So that will be before you for preliminary approval. So at some point, the developer will need to kind of figure out which option or options he wants to go with, and that is what will be presented before you for preliminary approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what I, that's what I thought. I wanted to make sure there would needed to be a preservation plan included in it. And I would just caution that there would probably, if your plan is to farm that. You would need to consider how you're gonna get water to that land. Currently, it has water. You probably should remain with the land.
It looked like Commissioner Call probably had a question. Go ahead and unmute and ask your question, Commissioner. Maybe I didn't see that right.
Yeah, my, that's my question, is if it's gonna be a phase development, cuz open space seems to be words used for like shared open spaces in more dense housing developments where if it's gonna be raw ground or a phased development, that would be maybe phase two slash three. So that would be my question, is this a phased development?
As of now, it's not, and we are trying to preserve the land for, you know, West Weaver is a more rural farming agricultural community. And we'd hope that we could use this open space for its agricultural intended purposes.
Hey, Chair, may I make a suggestion? Maybe let, if staff could explain the density requirements and how that gotta stay open space to meet the density requirements there.
Sure, happy to address that. Thanks, Commissioner. So first of all, to address the comment from Commissioner Call, typically when, when we do have phased developments, and again, the, the developers indicated this is a single phased development right now. Typically with phased developments, we try to mandate the proportionate percentage of open space with each phase. So that that does not, so that we're still, so that we're plating open space along with the number of lots that would go with it. In this particular case, the, the way we calculate the minimum amount of open space in the A1 zone and the A2 zone for a cluster subdivision, a minimum of 30% open space is required. The developer, however, is seeking bonus density, and when bonus density is requested, a minimum of 50% of open space needs to be dedicated. In this case, we calculate it by the net. And so, when you take out the almost three acres of roadways, they've got a little over 22 acres. And the applicant is dedicating just over 11 acres, about 50% of that towards open space. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Edwards? Okay.
My, so I have a, I have a follow-up question. Does the county require a maintenance agreements for open spaces along with just water, so that the property can be watered? Wouldn't there be a maintenance, a long-term maintenance agreement put out there?
Not necessarily. We do require that it's dedicated as open space. Sometimes a maintenance agreement is required. We have had open space pressure, preservation plans from public parks and extended yards, I guess, to dry grazing, where we haven't required that additional water. You know, especially if there's a history of dry grazing on the land. We have had subdivisions come through even this year, I think, that had that as part of their open space preservation plan. Trails would be part of that, and we will require some sort of a trail plan in here. So there are a few different elements to that. There's also, there are also different types of ownership with the open spaces that we allow in cluster subdivisions. So it depends, I guess, on how that's presented to us.
So who would own this open land? The county owns it, or the developer still owns it?
The developer would decide if it's privately owned, if it's owned by an HOA. That's up to the developer.
Yeah, the developer just said that he would retain ownership of it. So the only other thing that I would add here is that the cluster subdivision's clear that you need to put the housing on the non-prime agricultural land. And if I'm thinking of this property this right way, I think most of that is prime agricultural land, isn't it?
Probably, probably the whole.
If you look up Google Earth, it's all. So we don't have to worry so much about where that open space lands, if it's gonna be agriculture.
I don't think we do know on this particular property. It's pretty consistently agricultural, you know, generally good agricultural land from front to back and side to side. So I guess, I guess now going forward, the applicant will bring back a lot more information regarding the items that we've addressed, but I think that probably and Tammy, correct me if I'm wrong here, but we, you know, we're probably looking at layout, we're probably looking at the roads in particular. I mean, we know the shape of this thing. We can see it here in front of us. It, to me, all looks satisfactory. It's in line with, you know, everything that's around it or will be around it. That's, that's been started or gone through this process. I mean, is there any conversation about that that anyone wants to bring forward?
It looks like at the north end of that development, it looks like they've allowed for a bit of a turnaround.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is it not needed on the south or on the west end?
No, it's less. Well, we might have to have it on there.
Typically, the fire district.
Yeah, I think that, that they'll probably require one on that end too.
Right.
So my, my initial question is, how do you allow for those turnarounds when the lot is developed?
They're typically plotted as a temporary turnaround easement until the road is connected through.
So, so owners 14 and 15 would just have to allow for that in their, on their property?
Right, I mean, their setbacks for their homes are typically going to be outside of that anyway. But that's something we would look at in more detail when the, when a subdivision plot comes in with an application.
Okay.
Chair, I got one more question. On the north end of that property, kinda where Commissioner Bell was mentioning, that's the Hope Irrigation Canal, and it's fairly elevated above ground through there. Is there any plans to do anything with that canal? Whether it be piping it or something, just for safety reasons?
There are a couple of options. At times, especially when an irrigation ditch runs along a roadway, engineering will require piping of that ditch. It, it, we try to get the develop, well, we, we require that the developer actually work with the ditch owners with those affected by the ditch. At minimum, we would require a six-foot no-climb fence on either side of that. Typically, if you've got five CFS running through there or greater, that is the requirement if you're within 500 feet of a subdivision. So that would be a minimum requirement.
I, I believe Commissioner Edwards, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the canal is closed through that area, at least, at least to where the, where the open space begins. I could be wrong, but.
No, I think you're right. I knew a portion of it was piped through there. I just didn't, I wasn't.
I mean, you're, you're correct in saying that the elevation of the, of the canal is, is quite a bit higher than the elevation of the, of the property there on those, on those northern lots and the open space. But I think that, I think that for the most part down through that stretch, I think it's a closed, I think it's a closed facility.
That brings me to another question. Will they be required to build the road up to that height so that in future developments, it can pass over that canal? Cuz there's a pretty good grade separation there.
Yeah, we'll work with engineering on that too and the canal company. When we get to that point.
Anything else, Commissioners?
I don't have any.
Tammy or Director Grover, on this particular item where it's a concept, is there an action? What, what kind of an action do we need to take here? Is there a, a motion and approval or for the concept, or what's the, what's the procedure here?
There's nothing you need to do anything more. We've given comments on this, and there's no action or anything at this time.
Okay, thank you. Again, I, I look at this as, as, you know, pretty standard and straightforward. Going forward, what, I do have one question. Looking, looking at the lot sizes, which I can't see them very well. What's the average lot size, just for curiosity? Do you have that yet?
I would say they're about 15,000 on average.
Thank you.
Maybe a little bit more.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, anything else? Okay, well, thank you for your time. We appreciate your, your information and, and your willingness to come and talk to us. And we'll see you when we come back for the next round.
Okay, thank you, guys. We appreciate your input.
Yeah, we appreciate it a lot. Thank you so much.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, our next item, that was our only item, so. I guess what we'll do next is open up for public comments. Do we have public to comment tonight? We might have some. Does anybody wanna share anything with us tonight for items that are not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none or hearing none, we'll go on to the next item. Remarks from the planning commissioners, Commissioners.
Chair, I just got one comment. I just wanted to thank staff and especially June for the work on getting those minutes together and brought us up to current minutes. It, it means a lot to have them minutes to review before we go into these meetings, so I just wanna tell her thanks for that.
Yeah, yes, and, and I agree with that. Thank you very much. Anything else? Alright, we'll go down to the director's report. Mr. Grover, hug, hug that microphone.
So we do have another meeting coming up this month in addition to our meeting on the 21st. On the 29th of September, we have reserved the West Weaver Elementary School for the general plan. And we have invited the county commissioners to be there, and we'd like to have you as the planning commissioners there as well. We've closed the survey that went out to the, the public, and we closed that right before Labor Day. And we're also gonna be doing some, and so that is to help with those who maybe can't use the internet or those type of facilities, but we're also gonna be reaching out to a few of you planning commissioners. We're looking at marching some map areas, some of the area of those who are aged that can't get out to this public meeting on the 29th. Staff's gonna reach out to them individually. Complete some of the survey comments that were. This meeting is. This meeting is more just to get more dialed in on survey, and then we'll be having other meetings after this. Any questions? And the meeting's at six o'clock, and we'll be sending out an invite too. And we're gonna be putting up banners out there. We took the banners down just a little while ago, just so that we can put them back up again for this meeting, because we wanted them to recognize that there's a change date, and so we'll be for the twenty-ninth, we'll be sending stuff home and the kids' backpacks the elementary school. To some of the other organizations out there to get the word out. You could do what you can to get the word out to for the twenty-ninth.
Right, I, I think that's a great thing to do, to get, to get more input on the survey. I know that there was some concern about, you know, people participating and, and the, maybe a little bit of a lack of participation, and and I think it's important for people, because there are a lot of people out in the area here that don't participate via electronic media. And so they need, they need some, they need to have their say too, and I think that it's important to, to get their input in this process, so thank you for that.
Also, there's, we didn't get too many takers on the planning conference that we had last week, going to that. But there is another conference coming up that we will pay your registration fee for. If you want to get in touch with myself or June, it's called the Utah Land Institute, and this is a really good conference. It meshes some of the planning concept with the legal concepts that are out there. And so, if you're interested, it's October twenty-seventh, and it's a full day, it's from eight-thirty to four-forty-five. That's a Wednesday. The registration fee is about two-hundred-and-fifty bucks, but we're paying that if you're interested in going to that. It's in Sandy, Utah, and we'll also pay for you, Liam, if you'd like to go as well. So you're a Portland, so just get with us and let us know, but it's just a great opportunity to get a little more training under your belt. Understand that it is during the work week and that, so totally understand if you can't make it, but if you can, we'd love to have you.
Are you gonna put out an email on that, Director Grover?
Yeah, thanks, and I'll have June send an email out. And then also have her send out, she'll scan the conference. It's on Tuesday too, but it's just a half-day, so really, the, we went to it in the past, the really bulk of the conferences on Wednesday, and we can just sign you up for either Tuesday or Wednesday, but or you're gonna be going down there, we recommend for you to go on Wednesday. It'd just be more beneficial.
Great, okay, thank you.
So can I, can I ask a question about your open house? I appreciate that you guys are putting flyers in the children at the elementary schools. Is there, and that I think will help reach a lot of people, is there anything else that you guys are doing as far as reaching people who maybe don't have kids in elementary anymore?
Our next meetings, we will be, because that's gonna be more of the, this is just gonna be more of a continuation on of the survey. And the other meetings, we're gonna be getting with the utility providers and different things like that, so we can get that in the utility bills and different things like that, where.
Did you do the utility bills on, on the survey? Because we didn't get one in our, did you put notices in the utility bills? Because we didn't get one.
No.
And several of my neighbors didn't get them either.
And that's what I'm saying, for this meeting, we didn't do that because we just wanted to get, it's just more of the survey information out there. The additional meetings, we're gonna have stuff added in the utility bills and
Okay.
Different things that way. This is just really a continuation on the survey and getting additional input, and where that survey's been out there all summer long. You know, we feel like we've given ample time for the public to make.
Yeah.
Banners, we've done a lot of outreach network with Facebook and different things like that. This is, it's, this meeting is more just kind of trying to cover our bases, and then our next meetings will be more heavily advertised.
Thank you.
Okay, is, is that all you had for us tonight, Director Grover?
It is, thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number six, legal counsel.
Thanks, Chair. I don't, I don't have anything for the group today.
Okay. Well, on that note, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. This is almost record time for the, about the last year and a half.
There, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
See you later.
Opposed? Thank you all, have a good evening.